For the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. This is the November 18th meeting of the Clinton Public Schools School Committee. Would a member like to make a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, any discussion there being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of November 4th, 2019?
I'll second.
Motion being made and seconded, any discussion there being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. This is, these are the best meetings that we have when we get to celebrate a lot of great work being done. And so, Dr. Meyer, I will turn it over to you.
Okay.
So each month, we like to recognize a Employee of the Month. So we're gonna start with our Staff Member of the Month this month, so I'd like to invite Mike McEckard to come on in.
The Staff Member of the Month for November is our Technology Director, Mike McEckard. This year, Mike has moved his office from CES to CHS to support the One-to-One Initiative. His work at CHS has been critical to the success of the One-to-One program. CHS Principal Scott Sirmack writes, "Working with Mike at Clinton High School reminds me of how much behind the scenes goes on during the day in the world of technology." In the beginning of this year, Mike moved into CHS and found his new home. From there, he helped administration with facilitating the new staff training, rolling out the Chromebooks to the freshman and sophomore classes with Ms. Cash, and working daily with students in his room. These students are trained by Mike in a class called IT Internship. The student's job is to triage or fix Chromebooks that come in during the day. With this training and his guidance, he is giving the IT students a skill that will last beyond high school. And finally, from a district perspective, Mike is an invaluable part of Clinton Public Schools. He's the perfect mix of technical knowledge and educational awareness. Mike is an innovator who's not afraid to make changes to help improve the district. Additionally, Mike is a guy who finds a way to get it done. Whether it's helping sort out our Professional Development Day at the Strand, or creating a new way to compile budgets in Google Sheets, Mike has a solution. So in recognition for all you bring to the district, Mike, congratulations on being the Employee of the Month for November.
And I wanted to make sure we got to recognize Mike first, because he actually is on duty right now at the Adult Education Center, so. So our next recognition is gonna be the Clinton Elementary School Students of the Month, so Mr. Rula.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I want to honor three young ladies from Grade Three. Mrs. Kim Cervady, Grade Three teacher nominated, three young ladies from her classroom who epitomize the art of kindness through the actions of their peers. The students serve as a positive role model in the classroom, and according to Mrs. Cervady, have the leadership skills to serve as a teacher to many members of the class. Lucy Moran, London Mendez, and Anika Hatstad, if you'd please come up. The three young ladies have become the welcoming committee to new students and to those who need a friend. The three have validated that Clinton students are amazing, not only have great minds and ambitions, but very large hearts. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Lucy, London, and Anika. They are now and will continue to be the future leaders in the school district and in the community. Congratulations to all three.
And now Ms. Sargent and Mr. Seedle present the Middle School Student of the Month.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really happy to announce our Student of the Month for this month. His name is Samuel Mendez. He is a student that comes into school every day with the biggest smile. He always has something funny to say to get everybody in a good mood, and he always has that positive attitude. He always works hard in class and often is found helping out his friends. Samuel is a great example of a kind, respectful, and responsible student. Sam adds kindness and sprinkles it all over the Clinton Middle School community. He consistently models all of our classroom and school expectations. He is a great addition to any classroom he enters. One thing that sticks out in his homeroom teacher's mind is he has an attendance tracker, so when students come in, if they're present, they move their name to the present side, and if they're absent, it just stays in the absent side. But if you are present and you forgot to move your little ticker, he will remind you in a very nice way and escort you over so that you move your name to the present, so you're not marked absent and you don't get that phone call home. Samuel is always looking to help anyone. It doesn't matter, teachers, student, kitchen ladies, cafeteria, he is there with a lending hand. Samuel is the first one to go over, pick up books, papers, he'll even clean the hallways if they're messy, because he doesn't like the school being left a mess. During STEM Week, Sam stood out as a helper to Mr. Cobus and Mrs. Neely while they were setting up and cleaning up, and Grade Six did some dissections, and he did not mind going over and picking up after all of that. So we want to congratulate Samuel Mendez as he lightens up the Clinton Middle School every morning. Congratulations.
Now I'd like to have Principal Sirmack and Chairman Bates to recognize our John and Abigail Adams Scholars.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'll be recognizing the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Award winners. To be an award winner for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, students must score in the Advanced category in one of the three high school state assessment tests. Those are English Language Arts, Mathematics, or Science, Technology, and Engineering. They must also score Proficient or Advanced in the remaining two tests, and they must also have a combined MCAS score on these assessments that ranks the top 25 percent of their school district. These are your award winners. Olivia Ego. Emily Bolio. Aleah Brown. Angel Cologne. Patrick Conroy. Richard Corelli. Jacob Cronin. Juan Marcos Feliz. Anya Frisch. Regan Gannon. Robert Gibbons. Emily Jordan. Galen Kittle-McCallum. Andy Leeka. Nathan Lipka. Matthew Lowe. Alora Mitchell. Ashley Nozick. Sheila Perez. Jonathan Ramos. Abednego Rondina. Mason Taylor. Andrew Tringali. Daniel Villacorta. And Elizabeth Windsor. We have another recognition. It is for the National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholar. Students at our school that have scored in the top 2.5 percent among Hispanic and Latino PSAT and SQT test takers in our region. The award winner is Daniel Villacorta. Thank you.
So we have one, one final recognition tonight. Each year, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents sponsors a Superintendent's Scholar Award. The recipient of this award will be recognized at a lunch in January, this year I believe it's at Holy Cross, and each year I have the opportunity as a superintendent to select this award winner. The process for that is typically, we get recommendations for a handful of students that I'll meet with personally and do an interview with, and then from there, we'll make our selection. This year, as most years are, it was a very difficult selection, because I think all the candidates bring rather, you know, unique stories and their impressive accomplishments to the table. But ultimately, this student set herself apart because of just her, I think, her desire to succeed academically, and when you think of it as a Superintendent's Scholar Award, you know, she's ranked number one in her class, she's challenged herself with AP, AP classes, she just has that commitment, that desire to do the best she can, and I think she's done a wonderful job of it, and we want to recognize her for that tonight. So our Superintendent's Award winner, Anya Frisch. Now, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will go into the rest of our agenda, talk the business of the Clinton Public School District, which to us is exciting, but to you may not be as much, so we will not be offended if you, we certainly welcome you to stay, but we would not be offended, goodbye, thank you, but we would not be offended if you choose not to. Once again, congratulations. Thank you for all of your hard work in representing the Clinton Schools.
I'll move over, you can sit right here next to me.
All right, for you remaining stout-hearted folks, we will have our comments, questions, and requests, and we'd love to hear from our student rep. Hi, Sophia.
Hi, good morning, or good morning, good evening. The Spirit Week kickoff took place on November 14th, last period, to get the students excited, the spirit, the school spirit flowing, and to bring out their competitive side for this coming Thursday, the official start of the 2019 Spirit Week. This past Sunday, the Clinton High School's robotic team guild force hosted their chicken shoot at the Elks Club and received a total of over $5,000 that will be given back to the team to send to the students to Detroit. And congratulations to the following student athletes for being named Mid-Watch Uset League First, Second, and Third Academic All-Stars. For girls soccer, First Team, Regan Gannon and Riley Mishad. Second Team, Mia Hool and Vrainam Vereria. And academic, Ashley Nozick. For boys soccer, First Team, Jacob Petrie and Lucas Almeida. Second Team and Academic, Mason Taylor. Field hockey, First Team, Haven Leclerc. Second Team, Kiara Bijou and Alana Hoag. And academic, Madison McDonald. For golf, Mid-Watch Uset D-League MVP, Ryan Marshall. All-Stars, Robert Gibbons and Colin Small. And academic, Pat Morin. Boys and girls cross-country, All-Star medalist Ian Johns, 8th grade. Academic, Owen Bridell and Ella Rapoli. Boys and girls team awarded the Mid-Watch Uset Esportsmanship Award. And for fall cheer, All-Stars, Bella Gemma and Faith Burton. And for academic, Jocelyn Rosignol. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Do we have any, do we have anything from the PTA tonight? CPAC? Do we have anything from CPAC tonight? Okay. Thank you, thank you. Do we have anything from the CTA tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know today that Mrs. Myford sang at the funeral for Mr. Firefighter, so thank you to Dr. Meyer for providing professional release time so that she could do that. And regards to stipends, the CTA Stipend Board met with Dr. Meyer last week, and we had a really rich discussion, and I thought really productive. We feel like we're close.
Terrific.
To solving this, to finishing this up. It was not only a time for him, for us, to share issues of doing some of the jobs that are the behind-the-scenes stuff that isn't so readily apparent. And on the other side, Dr. Meyer shared leadership vision with us, issues about state funding, and issues about rules and regulations that aren't necessarily on our purview. So we had a great conversation. And in regards to last time, I know you spoke about Professional Development Days that teachers would have. We had our full PD day, and the staff had a lot of discussion, I heard from, we had an exec board meeting this afternoon, and we heard from each of the building reps on that. But I've also been able to talk with a lot of staff since then about it, and we're all appreciative of the depth of information that was covered that day. Two really tough films to watch. But it was reassuring to know that it's widespread, it's just not in our respective schools, and it's not our fault. However, we left feeling traumatized, with no solutions, no helpful advice that we could implement on Monday in our classrooms. So we understand the problem, even maybe a deeper problem that we thought was there, but we're really questioning, how do we, how do we, how do we help? How do we make things better? We feel like we need much more training. We also feel like we, after watching those films, that we need much more support staff in the guidance department to help, help our students deal with some of the issues that they come to school with. So that's our takeaway from PD, from PD.
And I'd say, the only thing I'd say, and I know, and I know you know this too with some of the discussions, is that, you know, I think really our goal that day wasn't necessarily to present the solutions, the goal was to try to make sure we had an understanding, a common understanding of what the root of some of the problems are. And I think as we continue to go through the year and work on next year and go with some of our other PD days, we'll start working towards what do those solutions look like? So, because I think if one thing has showed, those, a lot of the, a lot of the trauma and problems that students face that they bring to school, we're not gonna be able to solve those in, in a, in one day.
No, we obviously know.
Yeah.
That it's not solvable in one day, and it may not be solvable in a lifetime, but I think every one of our staff come to school trying to make life better. But I think we left feeling like we don't have the support resources at school. We know that a lot of students go to guidance today. I was missing a student today, and it's like, where is she? And she comes back two-thirds of the way through the period. Haven't seen the 8th grade in almost a month because of STEM, and then their pre-Washington, and then their Washington. And I said, oh, I'm so glad you're here, like, we have a concert in a couple weeks. Where are you? And she says, guidance. Say no more, you know? But we have an awful lot of kids spending an awful lot of time in guidance. With tough stuff, we realize that. And my band room is open every morning before school, just for safe places for kids to go and hang out and do music and maybe start the day in, in a really positive, heartfelt way. But they're coming in the door with much more baggage. Baggage that I know I certainly never had training in when I was an undergrad. Lot of, lot of training on the job, but I feel like we did a heck of a lot more than we could have even done in a PD day, or even had a PD day. So I, I don't know what the solution is.
Yeah, well, as we say, we eat the elephant one slice at a time, and, you know.
Right, and I remember, I took a course quite a few years ago, you know, through Pittsburgh State on Building Resilience, and I thought it was an excellent course. But I feel like we need more of those resources.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate your time and everything you do.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any, any public comment tonight? There being none, Dr. Meyer? Oh, sorry. You got it. Again, is there any public comment here tonight? There being none, Dr. Meyer?
Thank you. The first item for discussion and consideration tonight is some changes to the school calendar for 1920. So there's a handout in your packet that has the two main changes outlined. The first one would be to change the high school mid-year exam dates to a delayed opening. Basically, teachers would come in and work a regular workday, the student day wouldn't start until 9:30. If students wanted to come earlier for additional help, if they could get to school, they'd be, they'd be welcome to do so. The current dates for this would be January 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th. However, those dates are subject to change based on snow days. We have talked to the bus company about making sure logistically that this could work and after our AM runs, and they said that was fine. So it's something we'd like to try, it's just one of those, you know, a lot of schools, maybe. It's just one of those, you know, a lot of schools, maybe historically, you might have done maybe an early, like a half-day kind of early release on an exam day. But I think, you know, you can see a lot of that research, always talking about later starts are kind of better for that age group. So we wanted to try to experiment with the delayed opening. The second...
Dr. Meyer?
Yes, sorry.
Breakfast items for them when they come in for these exams? I know that's one of the things they talk about is having when they...
So that's a good point. I don't know what the plan would be for that right now, but typically, we would have breakfast available in the morning, but we would probably have to work with the calf just to make sure that there was still a breakfast available even at the nine-thirty hour. Yeah. The second calendar change is just clarifying the last day for pre-K and kindergarten. So sort of traditionally, pre-K has always gotten out about a week, a week before the end of school. Last year, we made sort of a late decision to do the same thing with the kindergarten group because we needed the time to do proper screenings of our, of our students. So the, the point of that release time, it's not just so that, you know, just, not just so they get out a little early. It's just, it provides us time so that the, the staff are really meeting with the students who have registered. And they're doing screenings and making sure that we're identifying any concerns with the new students who are registering. So this proposal would just set the last day to be June fifth as kind of a hard last day. It's a Friday, it can just end. The, we, we wouldn't change that June fifth date if there was like one or two snow days just because it ends up being, you know, pre-K doesn't meet on Mondays anyway, so it just ends up getting kind of difficult. So we just said, we'll keep it at June fifth. The only way we would revisit that and change that date is if we exceed the five snow days, where basically, we're going to have to probably come back and talk about, have other discussions on how we're making up those days and what our last day would be. We would revisit it at that time when we did it with everybody else. But for now, we would just be able to inform parents that they can plan on pretty much June fifth unless there's an excessive snowstorm.
What's the pleasure of the committee? Any questions for either Dr. Meyer or Mr. Sirmak on these proposals, calendar changes?
I like the idea of...
My only... Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's do this. Are they crossed?
My only concern that I did already ask about was on the late start on the high school, just to make sure that the children could be dropped off by parents who had to work, that, you know, they had to... They provide transportation for their student, and they had to be to work before that nine-thirty time. But I was assured that they can get dropped off early and actually come in and if they have any last-minute questions or anything. So I think it sounds like a good idea, especially, you know, some of these kids are up late studying and makes it nice to be able to sleep until eight, eight-thirty, you know?
Any other thoughts or discussions? Since we approved the calendar, we have to make a motion to approve these changes.
I'll make that motion.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Yeah, second that motion.
That's for both the high school and the elementary, right?
Yeah, you're making a motion to do both? Yep, okay. I'll second that to do both.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor?
Thank you. The second item, well, I guess the page right after that summary was just a sample of what the high school schedule would look like if you wanted to see that. The page after that in color is the Safe Routes to School program. So the, when we were down at the MAS/MASC conference, I think it was Mr. Bates, he went to this session, didn't you?
I did, yeah.
Went to the Safe Routes to School session, and following his recommendation, I went and talked to the vendor at their booth. And one of the things that the Safe Routes to School program can do is they can come out and basically do like a traffic study for you, or a drop-off and pick-up analysis, if you get the exact terminology. But it's something that we've been talking about at the elementary school anyway. And it had been, we talked about how that had kind of been referred to the Towns Traffic Committee. When we heard about this opportunity, we thought, this is a great opportunity to bring in people who do this all over the state to come do it. It's free, it's part of the Safe Routes to School program. The only thing we would need to do is we'd need to say, yes, we'd like to be a Safe Routes to School partner. This is the form to be a partner, this is all you have to do is fill this form out. You can see it talks about the benefits of technical assistance and designing and planning marketing initiatives. One thing, I mean, there is a, there is potential, and sometimes a lot of people jump to this conclusion, like the Safe Routes to School, there is sometimes funding available that if you, if you're implementing different strategies from the Safe Routes to School, like maybe we get a recommendation to start a walking bus down, in down High Street to kind of, you know, do something like that. If we start implementing that, it might make us eligible down the road for funding to help repair sidewalks or something like that. It's not, it's not a guarantee. A lot of people hear Safe Routes to School, and they think sidewalk funding, it's not, that's, that's a small part of it. But it is, is potential for that. I did talk to actually Mike Ward and Phil Duffy about this because I guess there was some interest in this program, you know, a while ago. And then it didn't really, we didn't really go forward with it at the time. However, it's, it's another good thing, any type of grant or anything you're going for, if you're part of this program and you're working with them, it's another thing that the Economic Development Office can use to try to support those initiatives as well. So, you know, I don't think, there's no real cost, and they'll come out and do an analysis for free. So if you guys are comfortable with me signing up for it, then we can do that.
Would someone like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to enroll the Clinton Public Schools in the Safe Routes to School program? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
So there's no cost to us?
Nope, there'd be no cost. If there, if for some reason there's a cost down the road, I'll, I'll inform you. But for this stage, there's not.
It's, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation offers this as a service to communities. And there are traffic engineers that are available. There are partnership organizations that will work with schools. It, it seems to me to be at least a win-win to be part of the organization.
Steve, does the organization have like a potential list of grants that they've seen communities be able to take advantage of that we could at least be exposed to?
I'm sure they do. I mean, I haven't, I haven't researched it in-depth. I, I do know that there was one for, I know, I do know there is, you know, the one that you hear about a lot is the sidewalk funding. But a lot of times, that comes after you've established your commitment and you have, you know, you're doing walk-to-school days, you're doing walking school buses, you're doing safety campaigns, you're doing those types of things, and then that might make you eligible down the road. But, you know, I think, you know, I think right now, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a resource that can help us with something that we've identified, particularly at the elementary school, is something we, we'd like to find a better solution for. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity now, and then as we, as we partner with them, I can, as opportunities come up, I can bring them to the board.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
All right, so the next one is just on academic achievement. So each month, we try to go through one section of the strategic plan on each meeting, I guess typically. So in academic achievement, there are, you know, a few strategic goals. Develop and implement best practices for instruction to support all learners. Align and enhance the curriculum with the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. And to demonstrate student growth on standardized tests, including, we aren't limited to MCAS, SATs, and increasing enrollment in AP coursework. So, you know, I believe the first one, talking about best practice, one of the things that we did try to implement earlier in the IFM members, we did the new, we did the revised employee handbook, which actually tried to incorporate guidance directly tied to the teacher rubric. And I think that was the first step in trying to get more of that best practice communicated in a concise document. This one, the second one, we look at key actions under aligning the curriculum. One of them says, provide opportunities such as win to challenge and provide remediation. So in your packet following this, there's a couple pages there. One, one's a summary from the Clinton Elementary School, their win team data report from the first round. And then there's also a middle school data report. And it just, I just share the data, and we don't need to really break it all down. I just want to give you some sort of understanding of the, the scope of what the win team is doing, what they're looking at. You know, so if you look at, you know, under the elementary one, twenty-six students in grade four were identified for support in the win team. So it was only about a hundred and fifty kids in a class, right? So you're talking about one-sixth of the class is getting that intervention. And typically, these win students do not include students who might be already on an IEP because they're going to have specific goals that are already written into that process that they're, they're achieving that support. So you can see we're using some things like Systems 44, we're also using Read 180. It's a research-based reading, reading intervention program. And what was nice is you could see some of the, some students as we went through, most of the students are at least showing growth, right? That's the main thing, we want to make sure those students are showing growth. And a few students, as you go through there, have actually basically been transitioned out or transitioned to a lesser model because they made such significant growth. So that's what we like to see. And then as we reassess the data, basically that second round that the elementary school started in the beginning of November, now, now if there's a student that maybe wasn't on the radar in the beginning of the year, and now we're saying that they're having some concerns, those students might be picked up in a different type of group. So it is, this is really the, this is really the student-level data where we're looking at, and we're trying to say, what can we do, what does this student, you know, it's the win book, what, what I need now? So what does this student need now, and how can we provide that? So I just wanted to share those, those snapshots. The next page is after that is also, it's a, under this, you know, talking about aligning our curriculum and everything. The next page is after that, just a, it says Looney Math Consulting Professional Development Plan. So we've talked a little about Looney Math. This year, we're going to actually end up with twenty-nine total consulting days with Looney Math, which is a ton. Sixteen of those, we contracted for in the beginning of the year using the Title II-A Teacher Quality Improvement Grant. An additional thirteen days are, we're receiving from the Department of Elementary and Secondary as part of the statewide system of support. So they're able to map out, and this is sort of the, the plan we've developed. The goal that we're really looking at trying to do is create almost, we're trying to do twofold. Like one, we're trying to do some, some, you know, professional development for all teachers that all teachers are accessing. But we're also trying to kind of work with some key teachers in each grade level to kind of, for lack of a better term, almost like a train-the-trainer model, where we're trying to, to almost develop some, some like lead kind of math classrooms. Because the goal is to not have a consultant forever, right? So we want to make sure that we're, as we're developing some classrooms that we feel, and some teachers and building capacity, so teachers can then serve as, as models moving forward. So that's kind of like the two, the, the two, the two lanes of this. One is the immediate professional development for everybody, but like the sustainability part comes in trying to kind of create these kind of lead classrooms. The, the next artifact I had in here was just a, or the next, hang on here, just said academic achievement updates. This is just on aligning our curriculum goals, just kind of give you an update of some of the things that we did. We did have a curriculum instruction meeting on October twenty-third, we had a professional development day on October twenty-fifth, and we've talked about a lot of this stuff already, but it just, how it relates to this goal, I just figured I'd give you, give you an update there. And the next artifact is just a memo, we did do a learning walk on October twenty-ninth at Clinton High School. So when you do the learning walks, what we had is we had basically, we had nine people in this learning walk, five administrators and four teachers. Each of those groups, we were split into three groups, each group visited five classrooms. So we saw fifteen classrooms in the high school. And as we go in these teams of three into the classrooms, we're looking for very specific evidence of different things from the conditions of school effectiveness, or the universal design for learning. And this one was learning objectives. So really, we're trying to come in and just see, you know, it's, it's a basic thing, but it's, it's a, it's a very key first step. You know, research will show that students will learn better if they know what it is they're supposed to be learning, right? So you walk in and you want to make sure that, is there a clear objective? Is it posted? Or if it's not necessarily posted, can the students articulate it? Do they know what it is that they're trying to learn during that day? I'd say one of the, one of the areas that we've seen, this has been the same area of focus we've been using for a couple years now, just to gather some data on it. I think we're, we're getting much better at, as far as, you know, ninety-three percent of the classes had something posted. We're pretty good at getting people to post what they believe is an objective. I think we still need to kind of work on framing what makes it a, a quality objective or a specific enough objective that the students can really take away. You know, our objective today is not just to solve math problems, right? You know, we need to have something a little more specific so they know what they're trying to take out of it. And then the other one is, you know, the, the limited English proficient students or English learners. You know, this, this framework also talks about some of the strategies that teachers learn in their, in their sheltered English immersion endorsement courses, about posting things like language objectives to specifically help students who might have language difficulties. And we're still kind of lacking in that area. And we've identified that, we've done, we did some professional development on it last year. But I think it's something that we need to continue to focus on with our professional development moving forward, and we'll, we'll go from there. But overall, I love doing the learning walks. It's a great opportunity to get into the classrooms, to look, not, you know, you're not just walking in and saying, oh, I liked that class, or that was, you're gathering evidence, you're, you're, you're writing down quotes, you're writing down things that were on the board. And then you're, and then you're discussing it as, as professionals. And, and what we had on that learning walk, we had basically our, our high school department chairs were there so that they could actually go in and see. So we actually had a group that was kind of, we tried to get like, you know, like Alyssa Piermarini was part of it as the literacy coach, but she was partnered with our high school English department chair, and Ms. Cash, and they were one team that kind of focused a little bit more on going into English classrooms when they were going around. So we did some things like that too, so we could try to help with even getting some of that vertical perspective of what does an English class look like here versus the middle school versus the elementary school. And finally, the last update I had in there, the last objective there, talked about increasing enrollment at the, in things like advanced classes and AP classes. So just a quick update on the mass insight. I know we've talked about it a little bit in other meetings as well. I do think it's important to realize that we've had, you know, our English department has had two teachers trained. But in our math department, there were three teachers that went to the, you know, participated in the summer PD. Two participated in the school year PD. The only reason the third one hasn't is because the class he's got trained in isn't actually running this year. So he got, he's, he got trained in AP Calculus BC, but we're not running BC this year. And then science, same idea, four, four teachers got trained. But two of them, it's really looking at possible like expansion into other classes. That's why they got trained, so those classes aren't running this year. So they didn't do the onsite PD, but they got the summer training. So I think we're working on, on trying to get those teachers, build the capacity in the teachers. And I think the great part of that though is to realize that, you know, there's only five teachers in the science department, and four of them got to participate in this training. So whether they're teaching an AP course or not, they've got that, that, that rigorous kind of course about AP work and what's expected, and at least they're, they're understanding those expectations. And then you can see the other one, the, the other ones are the student sessions. You know, we had twenty-six out of thirty-one go to the English session, thirty-one out of forty-four went to the science session. So those, I mean, I think for year one, those are good numbers. We have students that are, these are Saturday sessions, kids aren't required to attend, but they're going to get the extra help for the SAT, for the AP tests. So, you know, I think that's positive that we're getting those, those type of numbers. So, and the next one is the math one on January fourth. And that's pretty much, you know, that's, that's sort of my update on the academic achievement. I'd be glad to go back and answer any questions. I tried to just kind of get through it, you know, quickly, quick enough. But if you have anything, any questions, I'll certainly go back.
Yes. Do you provide transportation to these or no?
Yes, so through our Title IV grant, when we knew we were getting into this program, we budgeted money to provide busing transportation to those.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, the next update is just on the statewide system of support. So that's the, the partnership with the state and the elementary school. We are scheduled to do a learning walk at Clinton Elementary School on December tenth. There'll be nine of us participating in that learning walk as well. And three, but three of them will actually be people who are part of the statewide system of support. And then we'll have three administrators, and then we'll have probably three, three teachers. So that'll be our, our learning walk on that day. The other thing that we met with them recently, met with Tom Lamy recently on the TAG grant, which is the, it's the, it's, it used to be called a turnaround grant. They're moving away from the, the term turnaround, they want to move to more of like sustainable improvement. I think that's why they're really using TAG as the acronym for the grant, because they're trying to stay away from turnaround. But this is a grant that we, we are eligible for to, it's really to develop an improvement plan. So it's not really for implementation, it's for, for developing a comprehensive, sustainable plan. So we're eligible for ten thousand dollars for that grant. I think I included, included like the grant cover page and our narrative. So our narrative is really working on three goals. Did I put the whole narrative in here? I don't think I did. So our narrative will be working on three strategies. The three strategies would be, one would be developing a leadership team to kind of help, a sustainable improvement team basically, which is part of one of the first turnaround strategy, which is really about distributed leadership. So we'd be looking to try to, the first part of the grant would be to pay stipends to teachers so that we could identify about seven teachers to be part of the sustainable improvement team. We got a map, we got a kind of a schedule from Tom Lamy today that it would be about, you know, at a minimum in terms of meeting time with, with him for this planning process. It's going to be probably about, about, it was like ten, ten meetings at about probably fifteen to eighteen hours, depending on the length of the meetings. And that's just direct meeting time with the state for the planning process. And during that process, we'll be doing things, really, really going into like a root cause analysis in our data. And then part of what we have to do is we have to come up with a sustainable improvement plan. But we have to make sure that that plan is not just, you know, hey, I think this will work. It needs to be a research-based improvement plan. So that, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that goes into that. One other strategy we were going to use is to have a consultant come in to help to be part of that improvement team, also to gather some classroom observation data for us, to go through and kind of basically observe classrooms. We're looking at probably bringing that consultant in for about ten days to come in and observe classrooms to really get a, get a true sense of, you know, where do we, where do we feel we are in our, in our classroom? we are in our, in our classroom data. We kind of say, we want to use that data, too. It's gonna be kind of in between, and we'll talk to, we'll talk to the, the CTA about the role of that data, but we're saying, it's not something that's gonna be like coaching data where it's, you know, almost like confidential, like it's practice, but it's also not gonna be used directly for your observations. It's not something that's gonna be part of your evaluation system. However, I think if, you know, if obviously we're seeing a concern, then that's, that's an indicator that administrators should really make sure they're getting in that classroom to see what we need to do to, to improve, so. And then the third strategy, which is the fourth turnaround, research-based turnaround practice, is family and community engagement. So, we have a little bit of money that we're allocating from the grant to help do some things like provide translation and get some supplies and those types of things, so that we can hold some stakeholder meetings in the evening to try to bring parents in, probably at least two events, probably one early on to try to get some initial thoughts, and at least one later when we're talking, when we're, when we're more equipped to talk about strategies and where's, where, where we think we might be heading. So, I just wanted to, to, you know, let you know that, and that we're, the submission deadline for that grant is the 22nd. We sent a draft into them today, so that we could get some feedback on it and make sure that they're comfortable with the grant. And then, the other thing that is of note, I guess, is that they have said in the past, it's kind of a change, but if, if we don't spend the entire grant on the planning process, they, I guess they are kind of letting you spend the remainder, it's, it's a state-funded grant, so it has to be spent by all, completely spent by June. So, if we were to finish our planning process in, say, April, and we had a, a complete plan, and we still had some grant money, we would be allowed to use that leftover grant money to start implementing the plan, if we wanted to. And then, it's kind of a, it's kind of a tricky situation, because, you know, I think we're doing, this is great, we're doing this planning process, it's gonna allow us to look deeply at our data, it's gonna allow us to create, you know, some strategic objectives to move forward. But obviously, I think we're doing a lot of good work now anyway, so the goal is if we're not identified next year anyway, then we wouldn't be eligible for implementation funding. But, but if we are still, you know, identified next year, we would be eligible for implementation funding to help put the plan into action.
So, the true measurable, what they're looking at every year is the M-CAS results?
I mean, that's, that's ultimately what, what they're gonna, that's how we were identified. It was basically, you know, based on that. So, that's what they're gonna look at. But, you know, we're, we're trying to look at these different practices. You know, we were talking about using like the, the Mass Tiered System of Support almost as a framework for, for looking into our, how we dig our data and, and looking into, you know, what are we doing in the tier, what are we doing in the tier-one setting? Like, what are our classroom teachers doing? And that's part of those observations, gathering that data. And then, looking at how are we identifying, you know, the wind blocks, and what are we doing there, and how are we meeting those needs and identifying that? And just trying to make sure we're building that whole continuum of support, because, you know, it, the thing about that continuum is it kind of all relies on, on, on each other, right? So, if you have a weak spot, one, one place, you know, you're gonna have gaps in that system. And I think if we can just really do a deep dive into the data and try to build out that plan, it's gonna lead to sustainable improvement.
Anything else on that?
Okay.
That's all I have.
Yep, so, under our advisory committees, I know that curriculum does not meet again until the 13th of December.
Is it 13th or the 11th? It's, it's a Wednesday, right?
It's the 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, well, that would make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Since the Friday of the 13th.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Anything from Safety Committee? Well, actually, I don't think you met either. Is that correct?
That's, that's the last meeting.
Okay.
We probably have a few, a few things in the works that we'll be, we'll be meeting soon to, to debrief on.
Okay, great. The marketing?
I don't think.
Yeah, we actually had a great meeting last Thursday night, and we decided to move forward with some form of communication. That's where we recognized that we want to start communicating, not only with the parents in the district, but also the community as a whole. And we researched a couple of options, and we came back with a great choice of constant contact. So, I believe we want to bring that to the board, to be sure that the board is on board with it, to allow us to move ahead. To do that, we're still in the preliminary process rate now, but we did get, you know, some pricing, it seems very affordable.
Yeah, so you want me to talk?
Sure.
So, we did talk to the, I talked to the sales representative after following our meeting. Constant Contact is, I think it's used by the Early Childhood Program. It's also used by Clinton Parks and Rec in town. I think some people might end up starting to see some referral discounts, and we'll get some sort of referral discount, because at least we're, I mentioned everybody.
Oh, good.
But, but at this point, it didn't look like, at least what they had to offer immediately wasn't, that there wasn't really much of a scaling factor, like to, to, to go with one big, like Town of Clinton one, and add a bunch of users individually is gonna end up working out almost the same. So, what they can do is, so, when I went through the whole thing, it's, it's $45 a month for the number of contacts we'd be looking for, but you get 30% off as a nonprofit if we actually, if we pay for the year. That was, that was the thing I was, that he explained that I wasn't sure of, which means if we wanted to sign up for a one-year subscription, it would be $378. That would get us a year. We have the ability to start and stop that if we need to, like you can pause it if we ever wanted to pause it for a little bit, and then we could, we could go from there. I, I know, at one point with the, at the committee, we were talking about just trying to maybe go, you know, month to month, maybe just to the end of this year, but when you look at the, when I asked them, if I go, if we go month to month, we wouldn't get the 30% off. So, it's almost like, to pay for seven months for full price, we might as well pay for, you know, eight months and get it for a year. So, if the board is, is comfortable with us moving forward, we could, you know, we could go, go forth with Constant Contact. They help you build, they help you structure kind of your, your newsletter templates, so that you can build them in. And at least to start, we'd want to probably try to start doing more of a, at a minimum, like a, a monthly newsletter to get going, to just kind of, so we can try to get things in there. And the idea is to try to make it so that, you know, I always feel like, you know, when we do one call, you know, I end up doing one call because there's gonna be a chicken shoot, and I do one call because there's gonna be a Dairy Queen fundraiser, and you do some of these things, and, and eventually, you know, people, they get kind of that one-call fatigue, right? And then, when we need to use one call, because it's, it's, it's something that's more of an emergency situation, we're, we're, we're losing some of the focus maybe of it. So, Constant Contact would allow us, at least an email way, to have an opt-in, opt-out database that our community could sign up for right on our webpage. They can even do little text-to-subscribe campaigns, and that way, we could try to get the, you know, what's going on in the schools out to a wider, a wider base of people. So, if people do want to participate in, you know, people want to know about the Harvest Festival or something like that, we'll have the Constant, we put that right in our email letter that's gonna go out, and I'm sure Deb will post it at the senior center and...
We have Constant Contact.
Yeah, you do, too. Yeah, okay.
Do you like it?
You really need somebody who's gonna man it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only as good as what you put in it.
Sure.
So, it does take a lot of initial work to, you know, get it up and running, and have somebody designated to get that information and upload it, but I think it'd be great for the schools.
Yeah. So, I think it's worth us trying, at least, and we can figure out what the bumps are that we go through, and if it means we need to, you know...
And it's great because you can encapsulate what you want. You know, like I said, I can look through and pull out what I want to go to, or what interests me, and ignore the rest, that I may not be interested in. So, it's a great, I think it'd be great for the schools.
Yeah, and this polling that's built into it, too, so there's a little bit of two-way communication that can be had?
Yeah.
So, you start to, you know, derive different messages, there's an opportunity to get instant feedback on some of that messaging, too. So, I think to Steve's point, like, I think we want to try to get away from any type of communication fatigue and start getting into more quality, because I think if, unless you're, unless you're involved, there's a lot you could be missing.
Right.
And so, you know, I think this is a way that people can opt in for the different things they want to see.
And the data's there. If you're in the car and you listen to your message, I may not write down the date and time.
Right.
Where this would be, I could go back and look, so...
I think it's a worthwhile investment.
So, would this, would, so this is a way to extend the message and the happenings, if you will, of the Clinton Public Schools beyond those that are already in our database, parents and students? So, but it, would it, would it replace that system?
No, so we would keep our one-call system. So, there would still be, you know, if I, if we ran a fire drill and I wanted to send a notice home, let everyone know we had a fire drill today, I'm gonna use one call, and that's gonna go to our, that's gonna go to our parents, and that's gonna go to the kids that are, that, that database is updated nightly, basically, with, with who's enrolled in our school. If the, but the difference is, this one, this Constant Contact would be more of an opt-in and opt-out. So, we would be able to send it, initially, we'd be able to send it to everyone in that same database. But if people don't want that email for whatever reason, then they can say, you know, "I don't want this," and they can unsubscribe. But at the same time, if you're, you know, if, if another family member, extended family member or something wanted to know what's going on, or just a member of the community, they could also subscribe to this one, because this is more of a happenings in the school district.
Sure. So, when we talk about outreach, and I know that we've gotten feedback in terms of the goals around, you know, reaching as wide an audience as possible, does it have translation assistance built into it? Is that, is that something that...
I don't know if it has translation assistance built into it, but I do know that what we talked about internally was that, at first, like if we're gonna start with a monthly newsletter, even if that means we have to have it translated in-house.
Figure it out.
Yeah, we send it out in three languages, so...
Any other questions? Great work, thank you. Thank you.
So, I don't know, do you, do you want to make a motion to, it wasn't really a budgeted item?
Are you ready at that point?
Yeah, if you want to make a motion, then I can go ahead and work with the, with the salesman to get the account set up.
Would someone like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to work with Constant Contact per the marketing advisory committee's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, and I think what we had talked about is maybe the motion being not to exceed like $500.
Right.
Because, you know, the three, the three, what, the three and change will cover the subscription. If anything else pops up that we need in order to execute that agreement...
We'll bring it back.
That was what we would essentially put out in front, say not to exceed $500.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize the superintendent to engage with Constant Contact, not to exceed $500.
Yes.
Someone like to second that?
Second that.
Okay. Motion being made, seconded.
She can have it.
Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Thank you, great work, Marketing Subcommittee, thank you. Policy and Procedures Advisory Committee, sorry?
Yeah, no, I, on policy one, and, go ahead, I just have something to add, but there's some committee members here.
Okay. So, there are a number, there are a few policies that we have taken a look at, we will have them for you for, in your packets prior to, and for the December...
9th.
Thank you?
So...
9th meeting, one second.
Okay.
December 9th meeting, hopefully for a vote of approval to move forward.
So, on that one about the advertising?
Yes.
And I had talked with you about this.
Yeah.
I forgot this part, the one, the one restriction that I forgot to ask about would be political science, especially in today's, I don't think that we should have any type of political advertisement on town or school property. Just, I mean, where would it end?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and not just people running for office, but issues, I mean, it just couldn't, you know? So, I'd like to see that, you know, if you can put that in the policy letter before, or do we have to wait to the, to the 9th? I don't know. I hate to type it all up and then have to go back and...
No, I, I tell you, the one thing I could do, though, is I could look at, and I know you did express that concern to me when I started.
I forgot about it, I did that last time.
But we can, one of the things I thought about after that is, I should probably, I can probably check with the Attorney General's Office first, because I do know usually around election time, they come out with some very specific criteria about different things, about, you know, when you have a candidate that wants to like rent your auditorium to do something, like can you or can't you, and what are those types of things? So, I could probably check for that political advisory and just see, and then we might, there might be something in there that sort of covers that anyway.
That general law may cover that.
Right. And then, if it's, if it's not, then we could, we could bring the, we could always bring the policy back up. At least for now, I think we have the policy as, as it was approved by you guys, which I think is a good, a good start. Yeah.
That worked.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything under facilities? Okay.
Oh, just so, facilities, I know we talked about having Russ come to a meeting. We already had scheduled for our meeting, you know, we do the strategic plan topics. December 9th was already penciled in as a facilities discussion. So, Russ will be here on the December 9th meeting, and we'll go over that.
Okay.
And he's, he's reviewed our walkthroughs on the facilities and the buildings, and so would he be prepared to speak to that work in terms of punch lists, status, that kind of thing?
I could certainly ask him to be prepared as...
Great.
For that.
Thanks. Thank you. Anything under old business? So, I'm not sure whether it's under old business or new business, having happened in the past but not having been discussed here before. I just want to say thank you to the Clinton Public Schools, to Dr. Meyer for the opportunity to attend the MASCE conference. It, there's, there's a lot that goes into being a school committee member, and I just appreciate the opportunity to learn with a group of committed people and to just try and get better at this job.
Second that.
Anything under new business?
I have a couple of things. Well, the first couple is just on behalf of the veterans and for all the schools. I went down to the veterans' breakfast on the Thursday, the 7th of November, and Mrs. Schirmack had put something together down there, and the kids sang, it was, it was pretty cool, and the veterans all appreciated it. And then, I was able to speak with the, the football team that same night, Coach Ball and Smitty asked me to come up and just talked about being a vet. Unfortunately, I had a plan that weekend, so I wasn't able to attend the veterans' game. But, all the veterans that did attend, especially the Legion, the Legion commander, both the Clinton-level commander, I'm not a member of the Legion, so I might kind of screw up their chain of command, but, but the next level up were very impressed, and they, they gave me such a jersey, and it was pretty cool. So, hopefully, I told Smitty and, and you, I talked with you, Steve, about, you know, when they do it next year, you know, now that it's the first year, kind of getting the word out a little bit more, and, but the vets that came were really impressed. And to, to Scott, Jamie, and Libby, for the, the kids that helped with taking the flags. They, we had some students from the high school volunteer last Friday, took down all the flags at Woodlawn Cemetery to get ready for the winter, so they weren't destroyed. So, there's about 600 flags up there, and they took them all down in about an hour, which is good, because it's, it's hilly and it's tough for me now to get down the hills. So, I really appreciate it, that was, that was cool. And on a personal note, Amory, for, for everyone that's involved in that Washington DC trip, my kid had a blast. He really, really did. You kind of fed him too good, so he's kind of expecting that now. That's not going to happen. But everybody that puts that together, and I know you guys, I asked you, I don't know how many years you've been doing that, but him and all his friends, they just keep talking about it. So, you know, hats off to all you guys. That was phenomenal. And that's all I got.
Agreed. Anything else in a new business?
I was speaking to the CTAC and talking about the Monopoly Board that they're making, and I was wondering if our committee each would personally like to donate $10 each so that we can do a $50 sponsorship for the board.
As long as it's out to jail.
(laughing) I think that'll cost you more than 50. I think it's a, sponsorship is 50, right, Kelly?
Yes, sponsorship is 50, and it can be, it can be a family to just sponsor.
That'd be kind of cool.
So I thought, I thought a $50 sponsorship for the Clinton School Committee would be...
I'm in.
Would be nice if everybody could chip in 10.
Five. Yep.
I'll get you guys on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Anything else in a new business?
I have, I have one thing. Sorry. But the, so every year, we have, typically have some issues, not issues, but we always have competing interests, I think, for inside gym time in the winter. We have the Billy Wynn Basketball, you know, they have, they do a great job. They have a ton of numbers, and they can use all the gym time they can get. We also have, you know, cheerleading, youth cheerleading in town, and our cheerleading program has been doing phenomenal, and that's growing as well. So it just kind of so happened that, I think it was in the end of the summer, we had a conversation about, with the cheerleading coach, and she basically said, you know, if we had a second set of mats, we could, we could put two mats, two mat setups simultaneously in the gym, and you could get, like the JV and varsity cheerleaders could basically practice at the same time in the gym. At the same time, she mentioned that their cheerleading mats were about 20 years old. They were from the, kind of when the high school was built. So, so we researched what mats were. They're about, about $5,000 for a set of mats. On the same time, I talked to members of the Billy Wynn Basketball Association and said, you know, hey, if we had a second set of mats, we'd be able to get you guys in to the gym a little earlier. So the Billy Wynn Board met, and they, they donated $3,000.
Oh, boy.
So that we could purchase new cheerleading mats. So there's about a remaining 1,900 that we're going to just take out of the Athletic Revolving account. But that'll do two things. One, it'll let our cheerleading program to now have a current set of mats, but it'll also allow them to practice simultaneously, and that way that Billy Wynn Basketball can get into the gym a little more. So, so it was a $3,000 donation from them, so I just wanted to recognize that.
And the balance is coming from where?
Our Athletic Revolving account, which is typically where our, like, gate receipts go.
And are we, are we committing to Billy Wynn that in subsequent years, that that time will be locked in for them? Because, just to play devil's advocate, I got my mats, I'm happy-go-lucky. Next year, JV and Varsity say, yeah, it's not going to work for us because, you know, the coach, you know, has a different work schedule, and now they don't get those hours in subsequent years, because that's a heavy investment.
Yep. So we did, when I did meet with a couple of members of the board, they brought up that concern, and what I did is I showed them that what we would do is we would write a detailed thank you letter to them that would kind of sort of outline the agreement. We're not going to get to the point where we put like specific hours in there, but at least understand the spirit of the agreement, so that if, you know, like you said, if someone wants to say, hey, well, that wasn't the deal, like, no, it was, it was the deal.
Well, I think that's great, that they're looking for solutions, because, I mean, that's probably 200-plus kids that are in our schools that are playing in that program. They do a great job running it. So that's awesome.
Anything else on a new business?
Just a reminder before our next meeting is the Clinton Holiday Pops.
Yes, yes.
It's Saturday, December 7th. You can get your tickets at the Clinton Parks and Rec Department. And our guest reader this year is our former high school principal, Jim Hastings. And we also have a guest conductor that is picked anonymously out of a surprise guest conductor out of the audience for those who are in attendance. So if you're there, it could be you.
She doesn't mean you specifically.
I hope not.
December 8th is also the Rotary Pancake Breakfast. If you're looking for tickets, they can be purchased from any Rotary member who might have to sell them, so...
I'm a little concerned about the number of ways that individual school committee members are being solicited here at a board meeting. Thank you, everyone. Under Chapter 38, Section 21 of Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting Law, the committee will enter into executive session to discuss Unit D and CTA bargaining unit contract negotiations. The committee will not reconvene. This requires a roll call vote.
Matt Farocca, SC.
Joel Bates, AI.
Brendan Bailey, AI.
Tina Zapiantis, AI.
We stand it. Executive session.
Executive session.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Do we want to, why don't we sneak into one of...